Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the formal session of Montgomery County Commission for February the sixth. At this time, I will be doing the invocation and the pledge allegiance. We'll be led by Commissioner Harris as he makes his appearance. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. We thank you for so many blessings that you've laid upon us. Lord, we realize everything that is good is coming through you. Lord, just want to ask you today to bless this meeting that we're going to have. Lord, just remind each of us that we're here to serve all two hundred and twenty-five thousand residents of Montgomery County from north to south, east to west, and do what's best for the entire county. Lord, just ask him to move me aside and speak through me today. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the prayer. All right. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the highest states of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
I got problems. Uh-uh. What was it? Oh, it's all falling out.
Don't let it do that now.
I was doing my best, but it was not over yet. What's going on?
We'll call the roll now. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Today is a...
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, today is another great day because Montgomery's becoming the city of champions. And most of them are Dan Harris's district. Again, we have another state championship program today. So we're here to honor these young men, the coaches, and all the accomplishments they have had. Fifteen and... Was it fifteen and oh coached? Fifteen and oh undefeated? Didn't let hardly anybody score. Every once in a while, y'all let somebody score a touchdown or two. But I'm going to ask Commissioner Harris since he is the professional state championship awarding commissioner. He had the Catholic girls here for the volleyball not long ago along Montgomery Academy. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Harris.
Literally, the ink is still wet on this one. I'm just not getting the sign. First of all, let me just say congratulations for a fantastic effort this year. And not just this year. I've been watching you for quite some time now. And you're all champions, and I've seen it brewing. And it's come to fruition this year, and I'm sure it's going to come to fruition again next year. But you're joining a bunch of champions because District One is the district of champions. Today, though, we would like to recognize your accomplishments by this proclamation by the Montgomery County Commission. It's a short one, so I'll try to read all the wheresses. I'll try to read all the wheresses. I don't... I didn't write it, so bear with me here. Whereas the Montgomery Catholic Preparatory School varsity football team had an amazing year in two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas the team has fifteen season wins and nine without victories. And whereas the team defeated Cherokee County thirty-five zero during the four A championship at Bryant Diddy Stadium in Tuscaloosa. And whereas this is the first year that Montgomery Catholic has won the AHSAA football state championship after winning the region title five seasons in a row. Whereas Catholic's quarterback Caleb McCrary was named the game's MVP after rushing for one hundred and ninety-seven yards and three touchdowns. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Commission congratulates Montgomery Catholic Preparatory School varsity football team for winning the two thousand and twenty-three Alabama High School Association Athletic Four A championship. Congratulations.
This is Coach Kirk Johnson. Y'all came very close the last two or three years, and you probably got over the hump this year. So who'd you bring with us? Just to share with us who you got behind us with you here today.
This is our seniors. There's fifteen of them, and we have three junior captains as well with us. So these boys are what the program is. It's not us. You know, we have a great administration. They do a great job, but these boys is what make the team, so we're proud of them.
Why don't we just go down? We've got time this morning. Give your name, your classification, and your position.
I tell you what, come up to the mic and do it, and then we're going to line you up over here.
And then just line up as you do it.
Xavier and Justin, class of two thousand and twenty-four, offensive lineman.
My name is Willie Hall, class of two thousand and twenty-four, linebacker.
My name is Roger Bristow. I'm class two thousand and twenty-four, and I'm a receiver.
Hey, Ken.
Cornelius Drake, class of two thousand and twenty-four, D-line.
Get him in rows.
Carson Franklin, class of two thousand and twenty-four, offensive line.
Josh Hildebrand, class of two thousand and twenty-four, long snapper.
Jotavion Pierce, free safety, class of two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm Aaron Gilbert, class of two thousand and twenty-four, and I play left tackle.
Joseph Reeves, two thousand and twenty-four, kicker.
My name's Louis Gary, and I play DB, class of two thousand and twenty-four.
My name is Garrett Sanford, class of two thousand and twenty-five, and I play defensive end.
Courtney Williams, class two thousand and twenty-four, wide receiver.
Ricky Williams, class two thousand and twenty-five, DB.
Xavier Rudolph, class of two thousand and twenty-four, linebacker.
Jayden Pfeifer, class two thousand and twenty-four, cornerback.
Caleb McCrary, class of two thousand and twenty-four, quarterback.
Jaylen McClaney, class of two thousand and twenty-four, safety.
Kirk Johnson, head coach, class of... All of them, I guess.
I'm Justin Costanza, class of two thousand and one, offensive tackle.
I'm Eileen Aaron. I'm not going to tell you my class. It's a long time ago, and I'm the principal at Montgomery Catholic.
All right. Everybody just scoot over just a little bit.
You guys are awesome. It was so fun to watch y'all play. My son plays for A.C.A. So I'm excited to see you.
You could have talked all day about this, yeah.
Another son that played football for Montgomery Castaway. And I was going to give you a compliment. And you know what? I got you beat. My son was cheering for Montgomery Castaway.
All right. We're going to squeeze in. We might just go to the standouts.
This is it. If y'all squeeze in a little bit.
Come on here, y'all.
Everybody come on, squeeze in. Yes, we want to squeeze in.
I'm the voice. The head.
All right. We're going to squeeze in. We're going to squeeze in. All right, everybody. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Caleb. Mike Lawrence. Yes, sir. I'm doing fine. Yes, ma'am. Really, we're really looking forward to having you guys back next year. Another championship.
Now, those boys be gone though, huh?
A lot of them, but he told me he's got them backed up. I thought...
Okay, we have public comments. I'm going to ask Millie Taylor and Caroline Howard from the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association to come forward as they do. Again, try to help make... Remind everybody to try to keep it as close to three minutes as you possibly can.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On December the thirtieth, we lost our dear President, Ms. Eileen Wright. And even though Eileen is no longer with us, she's still here in our spirits. I now serve as the President of the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. Ms. Carolyn Howard serves as our Vice President. We are here with the residents of Madison Park with concerns, questions, and requests for the sewage of Madison Park. We do have a few questions. Our first question is, being that there has been no communication or no deadlines... No deadlines or dates given to us since... Within the last two years, we're wanting to know, where are we now? We're wanting to know, what phase are we in in regards to the sewage? We're wanting to know also, if you could answer these questions, what's our next phase?
Okay, let's address each one at one... I've got Terry Reynolds and Susan Kennedy. I'm going to ask these two ladies if they would... Let's address each at the time. So the first question are, where are we at as far as the phases on the water and sewage projects? Yes, please. Yeah.
Good morning. So to answer your question today, the county commission will consider a resolution to what we call a swap, to swap funds, which will allow them to use their general fund money to advance this project. The city of Montgomery has already approved this. Now, if the county does that today, then there will be seventeen million dollars that are allocated towards Madison Park and two communities in West Montgomery. And so we've been in communication with Montgomery Water, and what they have told us is that they will put a contract on their March agenda to get started. The delay has come from the fact that in using ARPA funds, there are a couple of things that would make the project really difficult. The first thing is that there will be a deadline. All of the funds will have to be obligated by December thirty-first of this year. What that means is they would have to have all of the funds obligated for contractors to design. They have to have all of the funds obligated to purchase land, and all of the funds obligated for construction within the next ten and a half months. And that would be very difficult to do. The other thing that has kind of delayed this moving forward is, you know, Montgomery Water is a private entity, and they have no legal or statutory duty to do this. They have typically not taken federal funding or state funding. And so the amount of transparency and reporting that goes along with that is not something that they previously had to do. And it's costly and it's time consuming. And so over the last, I guess it's been nine or ten months now that we've been negotiating with their attorneys back and forth on contractual language, that has been the issue, is trying to find something that will allow the county to meet their duty and allow them to move forward. So by doing this swap today, they can move forward in the way that they're accustomed to moving forward, which would expedite us getting started.
Terry, can you move closer when you speak?
Yes, absolutely. Does that answer the question?
It does in some sense, but our concern is with the swap, with the money that you're swapping, would that money, however long this swap takes, would we still have guarantee? Can you assure us, or can the county assure us, that we will have this money when it's time to break ground or when it's time to do what we need to do?
So I cannot assure you of anything, but I do want to make it clear that whether general fund money is utilized or ARPA funds are utilized, the county can still change its mind. The city can still change its mind. There has been changes to the ARPA rules that say even after you obligate funds, if for some reason the project is no longer feasible or something changes, the county could come back and say, we don't want to use the funds for this anymore. We want to use it for that. That can happen whether it's ARPA funds being utilized or general funds being utilized. So to answer your question, I think that there is as much guarantee as possible that this commission and the city can make in alignment with their duty to spend money in the best interest of the county and the city. I don't... I think there may be this idea that there's more of a guarantee if you use one pot of funds than the other, and the truth of the matter is it's not. Either pot of funding, there would be an avenue for either the city or the county to change course.
We just don't want... We are in fear that we know that we lost some money, and we don't want to lose any more money. We can't afford to lose any more money. We need all of the money that's allocated to Madison Park to go to Madison Park. And then you also mentioned a deadline. So if the deadline is December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, what's the move? Can we get it... Are we getting an extension, or is there something going to be done before this deadline? We don't want to lose this money.
Yeah, that's why they're doing the swap today. Because then they're not bound by that deadline. All right, but also, when you do the swap, it removes the legal concerns, all right, that Montgomery Water has had on this, so they can move forward with a contract. They can move forward with a contract for a part of the money or the entirety of the funding. That will be something that, you know, we'll take instruction from the county on. But now there's no concerns about deadlines. There's no threats of getting to, you know, three steps down the road, and then it's December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six, and we're not done, and Treasury says we want our money back. That's what we're trying to avoid now. Is it possible that Treasury will grant a deadline? It is possible. It is also possible that they will not. And so what the commission is considering today is, all right, do we want to gamble with Madison Park? It's getting done? Or do we want to make sure that we can get it done? That's why the swap is necessary, and that's why we have advised them to go that route so that there is no more delay, and there is at least... You don't have to worry about deadlines preventing you from seeing this project all the way through.
The county is committed to what we've committed to do for Madison Park, Ocello Road, Turner Station, Macedoni. These things, the county's committed. We can't speak for the city.
Right.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
But this move protects us from that deadline. If the deadline hits, eight million's gone. You know, this way, the eight million is always going to be there, and it's going to be there for us to spend, and they can get moving on it. That's the reason why I support this proposal, because this is something I've been trying to get done for a long time.
Thank you.
These areas are...
Thank you.
There's absolutely no reason why any area inside the city limits of Montgomery should not be on the sewer system. There's no reason for it, you know? And we're finally at a point where we're going to address it. We're trying... We're in a position to address it. And also by this... Doing it this way, it opens up the possibility for other funds. There's a lot of other funds that are going to be coming in.
It does.
Because we don't have enough money as it is to complete all the work.
Right.
You know, what, sixteen million is not enough money to complete all the work. This also, it opens it up, and we have more time. There's other infrastructure money. There's a lot of other money coming in that can be used to help, to complete the job. This is going to do a part of it, but this is not enough to do the whole thing. The whole thing, jeez, the whole thing, you wouldn't believe the number.
Can I ask a question?
To get it all done.
Is there a contract or something in writing that we can take back to our constituents in Madison Park that will ease their minds to... Because we've been waiting for a very long time, and we've had every kind of excuse given to us that you can think of. And so they're very, very, very tired of just hearing the same, and it's time that, you know, we get at least something that's going to make us feel like this county, the city, are doing things for Madison Park.
You know, and the county did do... On behalf of the county, I wasn't on the commission at the time, and none of us on the commission at the time, but the county did do the infrastructure for sewage in the unincorporated area outside the city limits back in, I think, oh-four.
They only covered a very small area.
Well, it covered the county.
But that's just it. That's just it. The county has no responsibility. The only reason we are able to do, from a county perspective, what we're doing is because of ARPA money. And this ARPA money is put together... That's the city. It's inside the city limit. That's why we did the unincorporated area. We... By law, we can do that. But this city's... This is the city and Water Works responsibility. And I don't know if you're going to get a contract or something in writing from anybody, but I can tell you, you have my commitment. You have... And I think I can say we... The majority of us would like to see it done. This is money that we would have never... This is money that we have to do this with, and we want to do it, you know? And that's all we can say. You know, the holdup really has been over the years. You know, nobody is really talking about it, but really, really, I don't know that Water Works really wanted to do anything in Madison Park. And it's been really a struggle to get them on board, to get them lined up, to want to do this. And I think we're moving in that direction. It's not up to us. We don't have the final say. We have the money, but not the final say. The work has to be done by an entity that has nothing to do with government. Water Works is a separate, private company, and they're the ones that will have to do the work. We'll pay for it, but they have to be on board too. So we can't... You're asking us for some kind of guarantee that we can't deliver.
Okay. I was just wondering. We never understood, why was it that Water Works had such a control?
It's separate, you know? If people think that it belongs to the city, no, it doesn't.
We know that.
It has... The city appoints their board, but Water Works is private.
Private entity.
And the fact of the matter is, quite frankly, we won't be any closer if we swap the money, leave it as it is. We won't be any closer, because we are at the mercy of the water board. And so I don't want anybody to mislead you all today. Swapping the money is not going to get us any closer today than where we've already been. If we go back three years, we were begging the Water Working Sanitary Sewer Board to sign a contract so that we might take advantage of some of the money in the state revolving fund for clean water and drinking water. And they may have done that at the last hour, but it didn't help anything. And so we've been talking about it for two... Almost two years now, and we thought we had a contract. Then they found out that some language, maybe a line or two, that they don't agree with. We go back, and then they found another reason not to do it, and it's just not the Water Works. Some other folks don't want it done either. And so I have evidence to support what I'm saying. But the problem is, and this is what I'm concerned about. Now, we talk about deadlines that Treasury has given us, and yes, they've given us deadlines. We need a contract. The money has to be appropriated by December of this year and spent by December two thousand and twenty-six, but we don't have a contract. Now, Treasury has created an equity hub. They understand that in historically disadvantaged community, communities of color, that a lot does not get done. And so they want all of us to benefit economically and so forth from this, what, eight trillion dollars in circulation as for the other pandemic. So they created an equity hub. They have an equity counselor under the Biden administration, and Vice President Kamala Harris, and Secretary of the Treasury Janet Yellen. And so they understand these situations that we find ourselves in now, and I would suggest that maybe we invite them to at least look at what is currently going on with Madison Park and some of these other historically disadvantaged and underserved communities, primary communities of color. They would not have written this... These policy there at the Treasury unless they understood that America has problems. Even the Biden administration has... He ordered his Office of Management and Budget to look at every federal agency, to see how their policy might have contributed to some of the racial disparities that we have in this country. And so I would take my chance on going to the Treasury to ask them to look at what we currently have here in the city of Montgomery, Montgomery County, as it relates to the people who have been begging for sanitary sewage in the city of Montgomery, have not gotten them, and how the money perhaps have not been spent in line with the spirit of what the United States Department of Treasury has indicated through their policies. And so I don't think we're any... I don't think the swapping of money is going to help us in unless we get a contract with the Water Working Sanitary Sewer Board, and for whatever reason, they have not done it. So I'm not in favor of swapping the money.
Let me say one thing to that Commissioner. The swap does change the circumstances, and I want all of the commissioners to know this, because you're no longer asking a private entity to comply with very stringent federal guidelines. All right, so it does change the negotiations at the table. Now, if you get through the first meeting in March of Montgomery Water, and both entities have said, we're going to swap, and they still don't move forward, I think that's an issue that the commission and the city would need to take up.
Terry, I had a conversation yesterday with the President of the Board and the General Manager of Montgomery Water Works, and they're on board.
And that's been our impression, too, Mr. Chairman.
Last week, we had a meeting, and Commissioner Moore Ziegler was in the meeting with the engineers, and I gave the directive, let's start now. All three projects start the same time. Do them concurrently.
Yes, simultaneously.
And we can get all three started. So you should see some results coming very, very soon, in the next thirty days.
That's with the swap.
That is with the swap.
And all the swap does is it just... It extends our deadline out on our time, because we're going to run out of time or money or both.
And it also, without the swap, and this is a very good point that came up in our conversations with Montgomery Water, there are extra costs incurred to spend federal money to do the monitoring. The county has hired us to do that. Most folks who do what we do charge a lot more than what we charge. All right, so Montgomery Water would have to pay some of that funding to get someone to monitor. That will cut into the cost. That's less money for these projects. So the time that they will save on not having to go through the compliance, of having to monitor everything in accordance with federal guidance, that will also save some money. And so while you can't see it, by doing a swap, you're also creating more money that can go towards these projects instead of going towards the administration of trying to do all of these things that U.S. Treasury is requiring you to do.
Ms. Chan.
So, and one more thing, Commissioner Sankey, and then I'll sit down.
Don't sit down.
I do want the county to understand as well that if you opt not to swap, and the city has swapped, we put the city in the driver's seat of this project, because Montgomery Water has agreed to use general fund money to move forward. I'm not certain they would move forward with your half of the money, which means the county would have to come up with another means of getting this project done, whether it's through your own engineers or hiring your own consultants. So it really convolutes the project, and we often... We don't often do this. But I do think that it's a big threat to this project moving forward if the county opts to move forward with a swap today.
Doing nothing is a threat.
That's true.
Doing nothing is a threat.
That's true.
Sitting here holding this money, waiting on Water Works to come up with a contract threatens losing the eight million.
So it's...
And rolling the dice, asking the government for an extension.
Well, we need to get dirt moving. This money's been sitting up here. I've been here a year and eight months, and I'm wondering why is this money still sitting there, and we ain't gotten anything done?
Everybody's frustrated.
So with my area, I'm west side of Montgomery, and I want dirt to be moving. And simultaneously, though, I also want my county commissioner, who's with your district, the dirt to move. So simultaneously, we're going to get this... If we all work together, there's nothing we can't do.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Ziegler. I really appreciate that. Now, I'm hearing the chairman say that he's met with some people and so forth in the Water Works, and that in March, when they meet, do we really have some... We don't have anything in writing, but do we have some assurance, just based upon gentleman's agreement and lady's agreements, that something is really going to happen after this meeting of the Montgomery Water Working Sanitary Sewer Board in March?
Yeah, they've already done all the engineering plans for Madison Park. Next step is to attain the easements and stuff like that, and they're in the process of doing it.
Rolling the dice, asking the government for an extension.
Well, we need to get dirt moving. This is money's been sitting up here. I've been here a year, eight months. And I'm wondering why is this money still sitting there and we ain't gotten anything done.
Everybody's frustrated.
With my, with my area, I'm west side of Montgomery and I want dirt to be moving. And simultaneously though, I also want my county commissioner, who's with your district, the dirt to move. So simultaneously, we're gonna get this, if we all work together, there's nothing we can't do.
But thank you, Commissioner uh Ziegler. I really appreciate that. Now, I'm hearing the chairman say that he's met with uh some people and so forth in the waterworks and that in March, when they meet, do we really have some, and we don't have anything in writing, but do we have some assurance just based upon gentleman's agreement and ladies' agreements that something is really going to happen after this meeting of the Montgomery Waterworks and Sanitary Sewer Board in March?
Yeah, they've already done all the engineering plans for Madison Park. Next step is to attain the easements and stuff like that. And they're in the process of doing that. So that's the first step from Madison Park.
The insurance will come in March at their March meeting. So we, in our conversations with their legal counsel, we are having to adjust the contracts to account for these changes using general fund money instead of federal money. And in our last conversation, we left believing, and I do believe this to be true, that we will have a contract in place to put in front of their board to vote on at their upcoming meeting.
Terry, not, let me say this. We understand you tired and you weary. We understand you want something done. It will, we are will start turning some dirt. We are not, we are not telling you that we're not gonna work on this and this is not happening. And I don't know where some breakdown of communication has been where you feel that we're not gonna do that. There ha, but there, we're standing here today as the Commissioner Harris has just said, as you got Commissioner Walker here, you got Commissioner Sankey, and you got Commissioner, what's her name, Doug Singleton. And and all of us are telling you that dirt will start turning. So now there's no, so we want you to know that you are not being forgotten. We've heard your cry. You've cried too long. And so we've heard your cry and we're gonna make sure dirt turn and then we're gonna come back and then it, because we're telling you, we not gonna have, we don't have enough money. But we gotta start turning the dirt so we can go out there and try to get you some more money so we can do what we need to do.
It's been three years, and again, I'm I'm somewhat encouraged, but I'm very, very doubtful. It's been three years and now we're talking about time constraints. We could have done something in phases. We know we don't, we're not, Commissioner Harris said some time ago, we're not gonna spend eighty million dollars. Well, we know that. But we could have done, we've already divided these projects into phases. We could have at le, three years, we could have at least done one or two phases and the people would have said, well, it looks like they're gonna do something, you know?
Ms. Sankey, you know as well as all of us know that there's no way, you know the problems we had in getting waterworks to move on.
I understand that. And what's the difference today, Ms. Harris?
But but what my point is, that three years can't be blamed on anybody on this panel, on anybody. The the three years is with the same people who are in a position right now, if we don't make the swap, to not do a contract in March and let the deadline run out on you in December.
Well, it's no guarantee, but I'll have to take the chairman, I'll have to take the chairman at his word regarding what waterworks is going to do.
I I just, so no doubt with these people. We, we, all you need to know is that the commission is trying to, we're gonna do our best. We're committed. And that's all we can do. I mean, we can't force waterworks to do anything. We can't force the city to do anything. But we can tell you that the money that we have, it's dedicated to that. And I can tell you right now, it's not enough. It's not enough. So we need all the help we can get. You know, the asking for.
We're moving forward. I can actually tell you, look in the eyes and say, we are moving forward. We're gonna move forward the project. We're gonna go as far as we can with the money we have, and then when we run out of money, we're gonna have to come up with a way to to keep moving forward. But we're gonna start all three projects now. And that's the direction I gave to the engineers and to water, waterworks, and they're on board starting.
Ms. Chairman, one last question, please, sir. Ms. Reynolds, you you mentioned that uh with the lack of treasury oversight uh and the waterworks, you know, not having to, I guess, be so concerned about meeting all of these uh requirements. There's some money will be saved to, and 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 if we'll get around those particular regulations. Do you have some ballpark figures of how much money we would save by getting treasury out of the picture?
Um and the the, when you think about a seventeen million dollar um project, um and you look at accountability, transparency, the staff time that it would take, um they would probably have to have additional legal time. They would have to have additional time from their accountants. I think you're probably looking at at least a million dollars. That's an estimate. Um but that that would be a ballpark figure of what it would cost them.
And and what's the the proper legal term for getting the the land? Uh is that easement?
Acquisition, yes.
And and so where where are we with that? I think we should, we've already identified where the pumping stations, the proposed site for the pumping station. How come we hadn't talked to any of the landowners about, you know, maybe getting the easements?
The waterworks has to get the easements.
Yeah, they have to.
Well, well, Terry, Terry, these consultants have been talking to waterworks and everybody else, Ms. Harris.
The answer to that, Commissioner, is because there's no contracts. So that's, that's, that's the reason. There's no contract. And, you know, we have been, the county and the city have been discussing this for, since the inception. But I do want to remind you guys that the amount of money that is allocated to this project was allocated about a year ago. So it's really only been in the last year that we could have negotiations with Montgomery Water about seeing these projects through in their entirety. This has not been a conversation that we have had for three years. Initially, the the county committed three million dollars and the city committed three million dollars, which was not enough to do anything anywhere in its entirety. So I want you guys to know that the the conversation about this more holistic approach to Madison County has not been a three-year conversation. It's been a one-year conversation and negotiation. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Sankey, but I want to make sure that's clear.
And the ADEM money, is that gone for good?
So the issues with the ADEM money.
It is gone for good.
It is gone for good, yes. And and the issues with that, um just so you understand, and you mentioned, Ms. Billy, about money, losing money, and I think that may be what you're talking about. And that there are legal implications there. So first of all, there was about three million dollars on the table there that the terms of the contract from ADEM required those funds to be obligated by April, like month after next. That that was not going to happen. The other can issue is that those monies also had to be spent, um I think they were saying by June of twenty twenty six. Well, the way the project is phased out, you can't spend that amount of money by um June of twenty twenty six because you have to do design and land acquisition. They already have price estimates on that. So that there was no scenario where the city and county would have gotten that whole three point two five million dollars anyway. The estimate was about one point seven, all right? And then when you think about what I just shared with Commissioner Sankey, that the cost of using that money might cost around a million dollars. Then ultimately, the decision was reached, let's leave that money on the table because we're having to jump through a lot of hoops to get it and we're risking the project. And at the end of the day, you might only be looking at getting around five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars.
And the other thing, Terry, we gotta move on, but.
Yes, I'm sorry. I wanna make, I will talk with you guys after.
Other thing too, is like we are committed, the, this commission, along with the city, has allocated nearly twenty percent of all opera money going to Madison Park. So that's a pretty big commitment. You know, in my prayer, I talk about two hundred and twenty-five thousand residents. Twenty percent of the opera money is being allocated for Madison Park. So it's a pretty good commitment. And again, we're gonna move forward. You'll see some things happening over the next month and a half. By the end of March, you should see, um you may not see exactly because when people acquire the easements, you don't see that. You don't see dirt being moved, but you should see progress coming up in the next couple of months. But we are committed to doing it. And thank y'all for coming out today and and sharing with us, but, and I apologize, but we gotta move forward and move on with the our time restriction.
We appreciate the leadership and again, thank you all for coming. Let's stay involved.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Willie Durham and I'm here on behalf of the Help's Outreach Incorporated. It's a nonprofit housed in Mount Meggs, historic Mouse Meggs. Um our goal with the Help's Outreach Incorporated is to be able to provide hope for those in that community, empower those in that community, love on them, and provide the resources and stabilize in the community. Uh we've been in existence for seven years and I come before you this morning is, we're trying to provide uh education in reference to healthy lifestyles. Uh we're providing financial literacy and also some recreation activity. We have a a gym there that we've been providing a, if you can vision, a hefty, glad trash bag. We've been using something to that scale to cover this flooring for all the seminars and educational opportunities we have. Uh we're asking for financial assistance in providing a floor covering, to be able to cover the floor to allow us to do more outreach in reference to seminars on lifestyles for health, education. We've had uh college community days there and we've had a number of people with shoes that are not appropriate for gym floor and damaged the floor. Also, on March the fifth, um this location is going to be a precinct for the primaries. So we're gonna have a number of people coming in there voting in the voting machines and we're concerned about the floor that we're housing our nonprofit in. And we're asking, I provided you with a invoice from a company that we're trying to contract with to provide this flooring. I apologize for the last-minute approach because we need enough time to get this built, shipped, and delivered before the primaries on March the fifth. And and installed. It is, it is.
Sorry. At the top, it says three six one oh seven, but then throughout it says three six one one seven. What's the location?
Three six one one seven. It's one one zero one five Jones Road. It's the Providence Life Center. Thank you, Commissioner Walker. It's int, it's.
You're in the city limits, aren't you?
Where. Uh actually, we in the PJ. Uh we in the county. We're not in the city. No, sir, we're not in the city. We're in the county.
Can you get this done?
Can we get it done?
Done and delivered by March sixth?
If if the county acts upon the request, yes, sir, we can. I spoke with the vendor yesterday. They can get it built and shipped by February the twenty eighth.
What are you asking us for? The church willing, the church asking us to help them pay for this.
It's not the church, no, sir. It's a nonprofit, the Providence Life Center. It's housed in the gym. Yes, sir. The Providence Life Center owns the building. And the uh the ask, Commissioner Walker, is is fourteen three.
I guess the question is, is the nonprofit able to help pay for this?
Uh we don't have the resources. We've, we don't have the resources, no, sir.
And this will be the first time y'all hosted a polling place.
It's the first time, yes, sir. They're gonna bring the machines down March the fifth, March the second. It's in Commissioner Sankey's district.
That's a new one, yeah.
It's a new polling place. They split the polling place between Georgia Washington and this one. So people that are on the Pike Road side vote at Georgia Washington and people are on the West Ferry side are gonna vote here.
Yeah, so Stone Park will also vote there.
Stone Park will vote there as well.
Eastwood Villa.
Eastwood Villa.
And Norwood.
You know your district, Commissioner.
Wow, okay.
So I thank you for uh the consideration and hopefully we can uh move expeditiously because we have to get it ordered and shipped and delivered.
And that will still be a precinct with or not to be.
It's gonna be a pre, in the primary and the general, in the general. Yes, sir, we'll just have to go back to laying the hefty glad garbage bags out to cover the floor. But it's also not only for the precinct, but it's also for the other activities that we're doing in the community. You surprised, sir? Yes, sir. It it's a great location. Yeah. But they do it in all of them. Uh they do it in Georgia Washington on the floor and they have other resources to be able to cover it. Um at Georgia Washington Junior High, which is now Pike Road.
Actually now is going to Antioch Church. So he got.
It got moved, yeah. But they've been voting forever in these gyms, um but other. Yes, sir, trying to take them out of the schools. Yep. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you for your time and I look forward for your response.
I guess next Florence is a public hearing.
That's correct.
There's a public hearing regarding alcohol license application for special events retail to Rancho El Paraseo LLC located at seventy-six twenty-five Jesse Reed Lane, Montgomery, Alabama. I declared a public hearing open. Is anybody here to speak on that? Clear, public hearing closed.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Is everybody up? Dan moved. Are you up?
I'm not up.
Motion carries.
I'm the only one not working.
Did you hit the re, restart button on the top, the little restart?
Let's do it back again.
Justin, you got any more state championships on the horizon? Get, can you?
It's not gonna be basketball.
Not gonna be basketball. Well, it's hard in basketball because your football season extends so far into basketball. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it's, it's tough on the basketball coach. Because he probably has a few of the football players on the basketball team. Couple years, huh? How about football coming back? I saw you got three juniors coming back. Be okay? Y'all uh. On your schedule, who'd you, you picked up, I know he's having trouble scheduling it. Well, Ryan Williams is gone at least. Pittsville Catholic's a pretty good team down in Florida, too. Curtis done a fabulous job. What a great guy.
He hassled me that none of the other private schools will play Catholic. I reminded him that Alabama Christian always has. I can't speak for, but we all, we have been one of the only ones some years. He appreciates that. And 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 opening, opening game.
Catholic, Catholic is still.
St. James gonna play it.
Well, no, no. No, my point was, yeah.
Okay, I was about to say, do we have competition? Because, you know, bring it on, Montgomery Catholic.
It's everybody's.
Yeah, nobody in Montgomery wants to play.
Because it's a guaranteed loss.
Carmen, you still down?
I'm still down, Doug, and this just proves my point. You know about us updating our technology, but.
Carmen. Let's talk about user error.
User error.
It's not our equipment.
It is your equipment, but you know, you don't, you keep trying to refurbish this stuff.
It's all, it's not all. Don't get me started.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you, Tammy.
So Tammy, just to clarify, you signed out and signed back in?
No, she didn't. She said something's wrong with this stuff.
You simply rebooted, you rebooted her tablet?
Yeah, she had to reboot it, all right, because it's old.
It's, it's not.
Okay, that, next one, Florence, that carried.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Consider an alcohol license application for special, retail special events for a Latino festival on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move for approval.
Consider a resolution to allocate ARPA funds to ARPA and ARPA Flex compliant current and future budget items and to reallocate certain current allocations.
So moved.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number one for the probate judge's office.
Move for approval. Motion carries.
Consider twenty twenty-four county employee blood drives.
So moved.
Consider salary adjustment for deputy sheriff's cadet classification.
Move for approval.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the addition of thousand, five thousand dollars from Commissioner Harris to echo, five hundred dollars from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to each of Leadership Montgomery and DBA Main Street, and a thousand dollars from Vice Chairman Sankey to Eastwood Villa Neighborhood Association.
Move for approval.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Move for approval.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Move for approval.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal, community corrections, county commission, the detention facility, engineering, finance, personnel, public affairs, the sheriff's office, tax and audit, and the juvenile court.
So moved.
Motion carries.
That's all of our items.
Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Harris?
No, sir.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler?
No, sir.
Commissioner Walker?
Nothing.
Vice Chairman Sankey?
Just February, of course, a lot of interesting, interesting things happened in February. It's also National Heart Health Month, so do what you can to take care of your heart to prolong your days. Thank you.
With that said, thank y'all for being here. A little bit long today, but it was really good. So, thank y'all for all being here with us. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.